With liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence for our armed forces who are fighting for our freedom overseas and those who lost their lives in doing so. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Tonight we will be continuing the public hearing for the zone change on Orange Avenue. I'd like to open up the hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address. Okay. Can I have a motion? I'm sorry.
This is the old time where it's all in the street.
Yes. Correct.
And what exactly are we allowed to speak on?
Yeah. Come up to the microphone, Jeff, and state your name and address, and then we can answer any of your questions.
Jeff Gensler, 32 First Street, Suffolk, New York. What are we allowed to?
The zone change.
Right. Are we allowed to make a question? This has nothing to do with the pilot?
The pilot is long-
Or the project.
No, that's, those hearings are long gone. This is just for the zone change.
Okay. If I may be so bold, then, this is a question that I hadn't anticipated asking, but if this is for the zone change, why has it been continuously postponed with the implication that the developer had requested postponement when we're a village and we're going to think about changing its own from some of our property that he may or may not be in contract to buy? I have no idea really where it stands.
Okay. I can answer that for you.
Yeah, these are two separate issues, and I don't understand why the developers had any influence at all in the Village Board's decision to continually push it on for a week or two at the request of the developers. It was said on these, you know, notices on Facebook. So it's not what I was going to talk about. I guess, will there be any other meetings, or is this the last meeting?
This is the last meeting for the zone change.
And as far as where we stand on the Orange Avenue project proposed, some people use the word luxury housing. I believe the developer himself used the words market rate housing. Those are two different things. I'd like to know exactly where we stand at the moment now going forward. A lot of things have changed. And remember, I had a whole other kind of thought, train of thought going. So again, but the biggest issue for me is I don't, I'd like to understand your reasoning for holding up the zone change just because the developer requested it.
Sure.
I can't understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, if I may, yeah. The developers, really the applicant, they applied for the zone change. So the village wasn't necessarily going to make the zone change without the developer's application. A number of issues came up, a number of issues at the public hearing, and a number of issues contractually. So when the developer asked for a continuation, it, you know, it's up to the board to grant it or not grant it, but again, the developer is the one who's applying for the zone change. They asked for continuation, and the board granted it. As the applicant, they're the applicant for the zone change.
Do you even know that all of the property that this one has?
In order to proceed, all property owners need to be notified, obviously if they're not a part of it. However, the developer, the applicant, is a contract vendor for all of the properties, meaning they are in contract to purchase them. With that right, or with interest, I should say, in the properties, they have a right to apply for the zone change.
Jeff, you have to talk at the microphone.
We have to presume the corner property issue has been resolved and that we've gone past that.
Our understanding is it has been resolved, and the applicant, you're in contract to purchase that, correct, for the public record?
And we can't ask any questions in regard to the pilot?
Yeah, I think, yeah. I think if you have a question about the pilot, you go ahead, Owen, because it, there's going to be a resolution tonight, so if you have a question, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. In regard to the pilot, I'd like to say a couple of things about this pilot. In the beginning, the pilot was hardly, from the way I viewed it and understood it, as a citizen who got limited information, whatever information is out there, no inside information, okay? It looked to me like it was an offer by the developer to pay a very small amount of taxes. And then I've heard through the grapevine that it's developed into a situation where the developers agreed to pay, and again, this is hearsay, maybe you can confirm it or deny it, up to like maybe three to three and a half times as much as the original offer was in the beginning for the first number of years, and go up further from there. And what interests me about it is the fact that our village is, as we all know, very financially distressed, based on the New York State report, if not the last, I believe. And I think that the developer knew full well about the finances of the village, probably more than most village residents, being that I believe he had the ear of the then mayor. So he probably knew we were heading into the tank and in the tank before I knew about it as a resident, taxpayer. And yet, he asked for that type of a discount from a village that had no money after claiming that he really cared about Suffolk because he went to Suffolk High School. I went to the meetings, I remember this stuff. So I want to bring that all up, so everybody hears the video and understands that this pilot, if he gets it, should never have been agreed to because there was no need for a pilot, no matter what they say, they want, if they've tripled the original offer, if it's true, they're willing to pay because they know they're going to make a ton of money on this building, whatever it turns out to be. I don't want to make any negative statements. It may be a beautiful thing. I hope it is. If it's built, hopefully it won't be. But I hope you don't pass the zone change tonight. I think it's inappropriate. If a zone change is connected with one specific developer, I believe there's a conflict of interest. I believe that a zone change should be initialized by the village entity itself, and then after that point, a developer or developers who have interest in this newly zoned property can come in and make some proposals. This didn't happen in this situation. And that's from day one, the problem I've had with it, and I think that there are serious questions about the way it went down. I don't think it was ethical or morally proper the way it happened. Thank you.
Just a brief comment on that, and I know this came up once before. Typically, in many municipalities, it works this way because the municipality then has control over what's going on there. If the zone change went through first, and then we waited for developers to come, the village has less control over what's going there. This board has looked at this plan for almost two years. The plan is there. I don't think it's really changed much, I shouldn't say that. It has changed in that the number of units has been reduced. So in that regard, this board and the public is aware of exactly what's going there at the time of the zone change, which is typical of a zone change in many municipalities. So, you know, to address that concern, that's, that's the way it is typically done, is the developer applies, and if the board likes it, they like it. If they don't like it, they can change it or we'll not approve it. So that's where we are right now.
Would anybody else like to speak? Sure, come on.
Okay, with all the changes-
Carolyn, just give your name and address. I'm sorry. Name and address.
Oh, Carolina, 25th, Suffolk, New York. Lived there all my life.
Back up from the microphone.
My voice is too loud. Okay. Can we, can you post a map to your webpage so that other residents can see the exact, with like a projected environmental and traffic impact and everything else that would be affected with this?
Again, all of those-
The current zone change and what it is at now.
All of those items are available. The applicant has submitted a map that the village clerk has, all the properties.
Yeah, could you post it to Suffolk website so everybody could be seen?
Is it posted already? Yeah, it is posted.
It is, it's on the website.
Oh, okay. I didn't see it. I just wondered, and just what is the impact going to be? Where we have hindrance of traffic flow? I mean, with the geyser we had the other day, Suffolk was practically out of Stanford. We had our hands full just trying to keep traffic moving, keep people walking, not walking through the danger zone. There were wires, there were transformers on the pole. That this, will all this be addressed when you make that zone change? So we don't have another risk like we have now on Wayne Avenue with that unexpected geyser?
I think that the nice part about this village, Carolyn, is that we have the ability because of the connecting roads to, to move our traffic patterns around as deemed necessary. Hopefully, we'll never ever have to have that happen again. That was, you know, a really horrible situation. But I think that, you know, the police department and the Department of Public Works do an excellent job in trying to determine in those situations what the best route to defer the traffic to is. So I think that, you know, that can happen anywhere at any time. Unfortunately, it happened here. I was told by United Water, it's something that happens extremely rarely, and hopefully we'll never have to do that again. But like I said, because of the way that our roads connect to Route 59, to Orange Avenue, there's always a way around. So I think as far as the impact in something happening in that area, we've had things happen there before, and you'd have to just change the traffic pattern. I don't think that's going to make the situation any better or any worse if the buildings there are not there.
Yeah, because unfortunately, we wound up dealing with the commuter traffic from the train, from the buses, from people getting out of work, school, buses, and they were just circling around. They couldn't get through Wayne Avenue. Kids had to get off, couldn't go home that loop down that area.
I was there. No, they got home. We walked them to their houses.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, no. Everyone was fine. Everything really went, you know, the first half hour was a little chaotic because we weren't sure what was happening, but as soon as we identified what we were dealing with, I think things ran pretty smoothly. I mean, traffic is going to back up, but that happens, if there's an accident up on the freeway, that happens. I mean, it's, it's just unfortunately, the way, the way it works, so.
And United Water is noted for this. A few weeks earlier, they had a cave-in over by Wanamaker and Carla Funeral Home.
Well, the unfortunate part is is we had no cave-ins and no one got hurt, so we're very lucky.
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
I live in the village, and this fellow asked a question. I guess I didn't hear the answer. It wasn't going to be my first question, but I didn't hear the answer to his question if the tax rate has changed with the, with the continuing negotiation from the original pilot.
Yes, it has changed. There is, the original pilot, in addition to, they are giving the village a special assessment, so yes, it has gone up significantly.
Okay. All right. I guess my question is, and I had asked this question before at a board meeting, if the zone change is not passed, we have this eyesore in the village, what's the plan for that particular property if it's not passed? We have to, you know, somebody lives in the village, I walk by that almost every day. Many of these people walk by that every day. What happens to that?
I mean, you know, we'd have to go back to square one again.
Which is?
Which is-
How many years, how many years is square?
And I can be perfectly honest with you, is we have had no developers banging our door down.
Okay.
And they are coming, but they're not coming to that property.
Right. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anybody else like to speak? Okay. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
One last question.
Jeff, at the microphone. Jeff, you need to come to the microwave, to microwave. Microphone!
Are the numbers available for the new pilot for us to look at? I didn't see, I-
Yes, they are available.
I tried, I couldn't find them either. I'm incompetent on the computer.
They are available.
They're on there?
Yes, they are available. Okay. No one else?
No.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Morris. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the public hearing portion is closed. Rob?
Okay. If the board is inclined to proceed, the next step would be to adopt a negative declaration. A resolution has been prepared. The board has declared its intent to be lead agency on this. I didn't read through the whole thing, but it just, generally speaking, it indicates that there was a petition in August of 2013, resubmitted as of January 2015 by Orange Avenue Associates for a certain property in the vicinity of Orange Avenue and Chestnut Street, more specifically, identified as tax map as section 54.35, block 2, lots 6, 7, 8, 10, and 29, where they petitioned for a zone change from Central Business Transit Development District. Negative declaration was prepared based upon all the information that was submitted by the applicant and by John Lang when he was performing work for the village. Again, I've distributed that to the board, and if the board is so inclined, it would be appropriate at this time to entertain a motion to accept that negative, and issue a negative declaration with respect to this project.
Motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
All right. Next, before we get to the zone change, there's an issue with respect to the pilot. As discussed just now, the terms have changed, and we have a proposed resolution, again, generally speaking, with respect to those same properties, and again, for the public and for everybody. It is a proposed pilot to be entered into between the village and Orange Avenue Associates LLC. In addition, the developer has proposed what is called a host community benefit agreement. That's additional payments in addition to the pilot payments that we had discussed previously. And based upon what's been submitted so far and distributed to the board, we've prepared a resolution. Importantly, the resolution is subject to a number of things, not the least of which is a formal written agreement between the village and Orange Avenue Associates with respect to the pilot and the village, and the name is Arco Management, who is a management company, would be entering into that host community benefits agreement that would be paying the additional sums. We've been going back and forth a lot on what the security would be, and that's all of them addressed and is in the resolution. And again, it's all subject to formal written agreement at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Is this on the pilot?
Yes, this is the pilot.
Yes, this is the resolution. This is the resolution that says pilot and H C B A.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
The next thing is a resolution. The developer had indicated, oops, the developer had indicated-
You lost your-
It's closed.
Nope. You want help? You know what? Matt used to do that. Ed probably knocked you out. Here you go.
The developer indicated that as part of the project, they would like to acquire additional property along Chestnut Street, also known as Blauwelle Place, that is owned by the village. There was an appraisal that was obtained. It was, we got a subsequent appraisal based upon the current value of the property, and a resolution has been prepared in that regard after the board has had an opportunity to review it. And so a resolution has been prepared to authorize the sale of a portion of Chestnut Street. Again, it's part of the project, proposed project for dropping off, pick up and drop off of folks on Chestnut. And there's a resolution that's been prepared in that regard, if the village is so inclined and is willing to sell the property. As part of this, it would be, we'd amend the contract for 120 to include that as well, to include this additional portion. And the additional portion has a more detailed legal description at the back of the resolution. It's, yeah, it's Chestnut Street, a portion of, basically from Orange back, I'm not exactly sure the amount, how far back, but the total amount is 2,399 square feet, so it's .05 acres.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have, excuse me? Yes, that's what we're talking about right now. Okay. No, 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 it's a small portion on the side, Jeff. It's, it's, yeah. Okay. I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Sign.
Thank you. Okay. Kathy Mills has been approached and given information with regards to the Rockland County Spring Summer Youth Employment Program, and it gives the opportunity for a student to come in and, a youth to come in and work in the village. The project is completely funded by the program and- It's, it's, yeah. Okay, I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
Okay, finally, we have proposed local law with respect to the zone change. Again, generally speaking, it would be to change the current CB district to a TD district or Transit Development District. Again, we've gone over it numerous times. Generally speaking, well first, before I get to the nuts and bolts of it, this is approving the zone in general based upon the application. Obviously, this will now go to, if it's approved, would go to planning board for more specific site plan approval. But generally speaking, it would prove, it would authorize high-rise dwelling similar to the MR 50, accessory uses similar to the MR 15, special permit uses. And in addition, in terms of parking, I believe it was negotiated and we've come to a conclusion of the requirement would be one and a half spaces for each dwelling unit, which would include available off-street parking acceptable to the planning board, but at least 1.25 or one and a quarter spaces must be on-site. And again, generally speaking, I believe the height was reduced to what was originally proposed, as well as the maximum development coverage area to 90. And the maximum height is down to 75. And I believe you had discussed these five stories, correct? I'm sorry, the six stories, that's 75. And again, there's a resolution that's prepared with respect to the local law and the amendment which the board has. So if the board is so inclined, it would be appropriate to do a motion with respect to that.
Is my law for the board?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Sec.
Okay, Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried.
That's it with respect to that.
Okay. I would just like to say a few words with regards to this project. There was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears in this project. Josh and his family believed in the project. They truly wanted this project in Suffolk. We have put him through the wringer and there's many times that I'm sure he wished that he walked away from it, but he didn't. And he really worked with this village in coming to put together something that I think is fair for the village. We are getting a beautiful building. We are increasing our downtown to bring people in, to shop, to eat here. This, this village truly needs that boost. I have to be honest with you, I did Meals on Wheels and had the opportunity to have to go into one of the buildings downtown and I was horrified. So this is going to be a beautiful area. It's a gateway into our village. It's going to be welcoming and it's going to give the lift that our village needs downtown. So I think that we would be remiss if we didn't mention Dagan McCourt and his vision for this property. He's here tonight. He saw that this village needed some uplift and had a vision for it and worked hard during his administration to try to bring this forward. So I would like to thank him for doing that. And Josh, I'm holding to everything, to everything. I want a hard hat and I want a vest. But I'm glad that we are finally, after a long haul, we're here and look forward to seeing all of the plan and going forward. You could sleep tonight.
Mary, let me finish, I have to say-
Absolutely, Frank.
I don't know, as people realize I was initially against the pilot, I know we're not talking about that. And that was about a year ago, maybe 12, 14 months ago, whatever. But I have seen such a change in this whole project and it seems to be the right thing for the village. It's more lucrative. It's gotten a lot sweeter. As Mr. Gensler was asking a question, I don't know if I was allowed to answer it, but what you asked, yes. It's that much better and I think it's going to do a good thing for the village. That's all I have to say.
Josh, you're going to love it.
I too also would like to say a few words in regards to the pilot and the host benefit agreement. This will only benefit the villages Suffolk, the businesses, the taxpayers, the overall village. It's going to be a great benefit and we look forward to it coming into the village.
Okay. Josh, congratulations, welcoming your project into the village. And we do have two more things on our agenda, so I'm just going to close that portion out. Finally, the public hearings are over. Yes?
Mary, we have to have a tax warrant signed by you so we can collect our taxes. Taxes to be collected are $11,434,891.03.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Markounis?
Yes.
And I vote yes, motion is carried. Thank you. Kathy Mills has been approached and given information with regards to the Rockland County Spring Summer Youth Employment Program. And it gives the opportunity for a student to come in and, a youth to come in and work in the village. The project is completely funded by the program and Kathy would like to request someone to come in to do research and clerical work from July 6th, I'm sorry, two, two students, from July 6th, 2015 to August 21st, 2015, at no cost to the village. It just gives them experience within their field. It's a great program. It's a great opportunity for them to come in and actually kind of get their feet wet in the field that they would like to go into. So I would need a motion.
Motion.
A motion to-
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Great program.
We had it once before Mary-
We did, it really did, we wanted to keep them. Okay, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?